Good morning and welcome to the Minnehaha County Commission meeting for November 3. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reminder, just to silence your cellphones, and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Bender, and if you need listening devices, Robert will be able to help you in the front. And with that, we'll start with routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any corrections or changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission minutes of 10:27. Is there a motion?
Some of them.
We have a motion and a second to approve the commission minutes. No changes or corrections. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item number three is bills to be paid of $635,054.97. Pay the bills. Is there a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, today's bills include, I think, just over $220,000 in fire department handouts, not handouts, payouts scheduled throughout the county.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the bills to be paid. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We have no reports today. Personnel actions. Carrie Deefle. Oh, we don't have Carrie today. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Jan Otts with Human Resources.
Jan, do you have any comments?
We'd just like to consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the routine action. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Jan, you want to talk about the employee anniversaries?
I do. We have a number of anniversaries this month. With five years of service, we have Tessa Severson. She's an admin assistant at the Public Defender's Office. Jennifer Heineck is a senior deputy state's attorney. And Edward Angel is also a senior deputy state's attorney, both from the State's Attorney's Office. With 10 years of service, we have a couple of people as well. Julie Ladwig, who's a correctional officer at the jail. Carla Dirksen is also a correctional officer with the 24/7 program. And then with 15 years of service, we have Mark Jostrom, who's a deputy sheriff at the Sheriff's Office, and Donald Hayes, who is a correctional officer at the jail. Just want to take this opportunity to thank them for their years of service.
Thank you, Jan, and thank you to those employees who are obviously very dedicated to their positions in the county. Volunteers, could you tell us about county department volunteers?
We had another great month for volunteers. Over 250 volunteers gave their time to a number of different departments at the county, including the Sulan Heritage Museums, the Juvenile Detention Center, the Sheriff's Office, the Public Defender's Office, and Emergency Management. Again, we want to take this opportunity to thank them for giving their time. It really helps out Minnehaha County and these different departments for them to help us out with different needs at the county.
Thank you, Jan. Obviously, very dedicated group. No applications for abatement, no notices or requests, no planning, and, well, we have a planning and zoning notice. Scott?
Yes, thank you. Scott Anderson, County Planning. I'm asking that today is the first reading and then ask to authorize the county auditor to publish a hearing notice to be held on November 24, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. in this room to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County to rezone a ten acre parcel from A-1 Agriculture to a planned development to be called Waterway Meadows Plan Development. The property is described as tract one of Prebs addition in the south half northeast quarter of section seven, township 102 north, range 49 west in Minnehaha County. This property is located on Haystack Place, which is approximately three miles north of Sioux Falls, off the Renner Kewanis Road area. I'd be glad to answer any question. This has gone before the Planning Commission at last Monday's, or a week ago Monday, October 26th. It was recommended for approval on a vote of six to zero. You may recall, this is an item that has been before you once before. It was re-advertized and sent back to the Planning Commission with the intention of allowing that accessory structure to remain as the principal use on the property. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Scott?
Mr. Chairman, I would just comment that the Planning and Zoning Commission, which did have questions about this previously, was completely satisfied about this now and moved it forward unanimously.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to publish the notice of hearing for the described property that was listed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Scott. Petition for compromise, there isn't any. This is an opportunity for public comment for anyone who'd like to address the commission on anything that's not listed in regular business. No one's moving, and a very small crowd. Item number 10, consider a motion to approve the construction change order number one for a decrease in the amount of $201.87 to the contract for Aztec Corporation for the project listed.
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Item number 11 is to consider a resolution to set the weight load limits on certain Minnehaha County highway bridges as recommended by the 2014 transportation bridge inspection report. DJ?
Good morning, Commissioners.
You've got to move fast this morning, or you're going to be out of luck.
That's got to be a record. After the last couple meetings, when you had public hearings before me, I figured, oh, I've got a coffee on the way here. Sorry about that, Commissioners. DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent, you're on number 11, it sounds like. And so, this item here is to remove all of our weight load postings that we have existing on all of our structures and implement a new type of load rating system. And this is for the short haul vehicles, the special haul vehicles that are like a shorter dump truck type vehicle with multiple axles and load calculations for rating the weight limits on these structures has changed. We did that through the 2014 bridge inspection cycles, and after that process, the state of South Dakota had to revamp how they posted signage for these new types of loadings. And so, they have done that, and they were kind enough to provide signs for us for this first go-around, and that's what we've been waiting for. We received the signs this last month, and so now we need to pass a resolution to post the new postings. There's 32 postings, which is more than what we had before, and that's because of the way that the calculations are posted, which is different than what they were before. And I have a summary here that I want to go through quick. There are 32 postings in total. Four of those postings are on county highways, and then the remaining 28 postings are on township roads. Somebody's controlling this computer. Oh. The new system is installed.
You can use, there's a mouse over there that you can.
Okay. Well, I saw it moving earlier, and I thought it must have bumped the wire or something for the mouse.
This is just a Halloween prank?
All right. So, we have 32 postings. Four of them are on county highways. There is a map also that Robert has pulled up that shows the locations of those. We do hope to begin working again to reduce the number of postings. A lot of these, with the increased number, that doesn't necessarily mean that we had a significant degradation in any of those structures. It's the new way that they're calculated. And so, the condition of them is generally the same, but the way that they're calculated, it requires a posting. And so, we are going to try to work as hard as we can to reduce the number of postings that we have here. And just this last year, I think we removed four postings from the previous posting calculation. So, we are diligently working towards reducing the number of postings. Does anybody have any questions about the resolution or the new method for calculating load ratings?
Commissioner Barth?
DJ, I've yet to see any of these trucks, which you had pictures of earlier in this. Are they present now in our community?
Very much so. And when we first heard about this, that's kind of what we all said. We haven't seen any of these trucks. And then we started reading the descriptions on what is actually classified as an SHV, and we found out, we see them every single day. We just recognize them as a normal dump truck, or maybe a concrete ready-mix truck, and they just have extra axles. And so, the way that they're defined is the number of axles in a short distance, and so it might look like a normal dump truck. Yes, exactly.
The one that I don't see.
And that's an extreme case with multiple additional axles. And so, what we do have in this community is those center axles are called tag axles. We might have two tag axles instead of four. So, that one on the right is what we normally see. And the one that you showed me there on the left is one that we probably don't see as often in Sioux Falls. Both of those are short haul vehicles, or special haul vehicles.
Mr. Kelly?
Now, there's 32 postings.
Correct.
We've got, what, 190 bridges, or what?
197 right now.
These vehicles cannot go on those bridges, then? Or they're mostly township, aren't they?
Most of those structures that are posted are going to be township. There's 28 of them that are on township roads, four of them that are on county highways. Just because they're posted doesn't necessarily mean that these vehicles can't go on there. So, the way that the new, the bridge sign looks like, it has a single unit posting and a combination unit posting. And so, combination basically just means that you have a trailer. And so, these SHV vehicles, they have, they fall under that classification of a single unit, and this one in particular is 18 tons. Our trucks, when they're loaded with sand, they might weigh 25 tons. And so, if this bridge was posted at 18, then we wouldn't be able to go on that. But there's a lot of signs that are out there that are posted for a combination unit truck, but they're not posted for a single unit truck. We still have the standard sign that we need to put the legal load on that bridge posting for a single unit. And so, a short or a special haul vehicle would be able to drive on that even though the bridge is posted, because that posting is for a combination unit.
Is 18 and 28, or is that just an example?
That's just an example.
Oh, they'll be different.
All the numbers are different, and on that map, it does show what the actual numbers And so, for example, this bridge 50087120 has 18 and 33.
Okay, okay.
Or 50095127 has 3 and 3. And so, every one of them is going to be a little bit different. There might be a couple that are the same, just out of coincidence, but more likely, every one of them will be a little bit different.
3 and 3, you can barely drive a passenger vehicle.
That's a bridge that we're currently working with. I think it's called Wayne Township to close that structure.
Okay.
And so, hopefully, in the next few weeks, we're coming back and asking permission to take that one off of NBIS.
I'd have to get out of your car before you drove over it, Dick.
That's.
Automatic. Let the car drive over.
It's on an old dirt road, so.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to consider the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to consider the resolution to set the weight load limits on certain Minnehaha County highway bridges as recommended by the South Dakota Department of Transportation. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 12, thank you, DJ.
So, we did approve the resolution there, right?
Yes.
Okay. We didn't just approve considering it.
You're right.
I just wanted to make sure legally.
You can stay in the truck. Authorize the chairman to sign the 2016 police service agreements between Minnehaha County and the cities of Baltay, Colton, Crooks, Del Rapids, Garrettson, Hartford, Humboldt, and Valley Springs. Kristin?
Good morning. Kristin Trano with the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office, respectfully requesting authorization to renew these contracts with the small towns in Minnehaha County. There was not any major changes to the contract this year. All the hours stayed the same with the communities. Also, all of the details of the contract stayed the same. The only thing that was adjusted was the rate due to the increases that we're going to see in personnel costs, as well as, we also take into consideration if there's any increases in fuel costs. So, the new hourly rate is going to be $32.79 per hour, and this is what we budgeted at, so.
Thank you, Kristin. Does anybody have any questions? Is there a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the police service agreements. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign an addendum to the healthcare services agreement between the county and Armor Correctional Health Services. Warden Gromer.
Good morning. Jeff Gromer, I'm the warden over at the jail. I just need to present the addendum to the contract with Armor. This addendum has been written up to help Armor provide care for the inmates at the jail. With some of the staffing, I guess, pressure for the medical community, Armor's having a difficult time staffing the jail medical staff, which has caused them, in order to meet their patient care needs, to bring in corporate staff. Obviously, that's an additional expense to Armor, kind of offsets the cost-plus-management portion of the contract. The addendum is designed to rectify that. Included in that is a $60,000 lump sum payment to offset some of the previously expended costs for Armor to get the contract more to that cost-plus that we talked about when we initially signed it.
Thank you. Warden, is there any questions for Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, I'll ask one. If a person in the medical professions were interested in working for Armor and working here for us, where would they apply it? Is it with the county? It's not, is it? It's with Armor?
It's with Armor Correctional Healthcare.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'd like a motion to approve the addendum. So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the addendum for Armor Correctional Health Services. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item 14 is to consider a motion to approve the resolution for the sale of county surplus properties, record ID 14086 and 14088. Mr. Litz?
Bob Litz from the auditor's office. And yes, the final pieces of surplus property have been paid up for the amount of $74,250, which completes the sale, satisfies the purchase agreements for both parcels. So, the action that I'm requesting today is that the commission approve and sign the resolutions of sale that authorize the treasurer to issue quick claim deeds to the new owner. The properties were owned by the county, so there are no taxes, interest, and penalties to abate on that.
Any questions for the auditor?
I'll move that we approve and sign the resolution of sale.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the resolution of sales for both properties. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item 15 is to consider a motion to supplement the general fund to the JDC budget for education and training for $1,250, and it represents a grant award from the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation for Disappropriate Minority Contact Conference. That's a mouthful. Good morning, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Any questions for Kim?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to make that supplement and to thank the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation.
Thank you. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve that JDC supplement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Any county liaison reports?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm going to mention this under liaison. Turner County is having a hearing tonight on concentrated farm operations, and I am planning on attending.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? Any new business? Any old business?
We do have a district meeting coming up.
You've got to move quick, Scott.
Go ahead.
District meeting coming up. I encourage as many as we can to have down there. It's in Scotland? Where is it?
Tyndale, I think.
Tyndale?
Tyndale.
Old or new business, one of the other, but we will be having a vacancy on our Planning Commission, or, well, we have a term that's expiring. Wayne Steinheuer, our chairman's term expires end of December. I've been working with Robert. We have already sent out a, as is our policy, and we have advertised for the opening that will be available in December. Wayne Steinheuer is eligible to reapply. I have indicated that to him, and we've been discussing it, but it is the option of the commission to appoint whoever you choose. I just wanted to make the public aware. You know, sometimes we don't have as much interest in these positions, and sometimes we have lots of interest. So, I just want to get the word out there, start working with the public to see who might be interested in that position. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
Scott, is that posted on the website too, on the homepage?
I believe it is. I know we sent out a hearing notice, and we will, we can post it. It'll be posted. We have a news release that we will post, and it'll be on our website as well.
Because I think people who are interested in county government probably look at that site more than we do.
Thanks.
Any other business? Carol?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller. Just wanted to update you on that auditor Litz, Commissioner Kelly, and myself were in peer last week for the third and final gathering of the legislative study on county government, and there were several bills that they had discussion about if these should be brought forward or not, and I wanted to just take a minute and summarize some of those. Some of those were style and form. I've asked our elected officials to continue going through there, and if they've got any potential changes, because obviously, we want to make sure that intent has not changed in that particular process. Some of them were housekeeping bills. There's been a lot of discussion about, right now, the CPI is limited to the three percent, the lesser of the 3% or the growth, and they've talked about bringing that up as which would be greater. And that actually did not get any support on that motion. So, that was kind of interesting that that one did not. There was some discussion about taking the existing alcohol tax instead of having it as a 25% revenue source for the cities and 75% for the state, that you would split that a third, a third, a third, inserting the counties into that. The loser in that, of course, would be the state. The cities would receive a little bit more, and of course, the counties, which we recognize carry a large bulk of taking care of people that are the result of purchasing alcohol. Our estimate is right around $900,000, is our best estimate at this particular point. Increasing the alcohol tax did not make it out of that committee. Enacting a county sales tax, that one did make it out with a six to five, and one of the legislators commented that he would support that, not because he was in favor of it, but because he felt strongly about local control. So, some good discussion on that one. The fee changes passed through, and we will see that one coming to the legislature this fall. It was, this winter, it was interesting to note on those fees, some of those have not been updated since 1895 or 1930s, so it was a good time to look broad at those fees. And the last one that was discussed was a potential bill that was to charge back to municipalities for public safety costs. So, that one, and they felt that was a good discussion point as they move forward. So, we will anticipate seeing some of these bills being brought forward in January when the legislative session starts. It was interesting to note, I just did some basic budget numbers, and Minnehaha County has a budget of $79 million with a population of $180,000. That means you spend, $439 is the anticipated amount of money you'll spend next year per capita. Our next largest county in the state has, is at $782 per capita. So, it's always interesting to note the differences. We are a very frugal county, and department heads, elected officials, and commissioners all do a very good job with the taxpayers' dollars.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you for the information. Commissioner Kelly?
I don't leave. Just a comment first. I was really disappointed in what came out. Lot of housekeeping, which are necessary, but a lot of cleanup bills. The alcohol distribution, if I recall, was passed and will be introduced. But I haven't got my notes in front of me. Tell me that sales tax deal, because it was kind of a feel-good-but-have-no-chance-type bill.
That one passed six to five. If every single county enacted it, it'd be $212 million if all counties enacted it.
Other questions for Carol? Could you give me those numbers again, that you compared that county per DM, so to speak?
The per capita?
Yeah, per capita.
Yes. When I did those numbers in Minnehaha County, our budget next year is $79 million. Our county population is 180,000 people. That would be $439 per capita. In comparison, Pennington County has $86 million with 110,000 people for $782 per capita.
And that did hurt us a little bit. They quizzed the Pennington County representative about, oh, I believe they put in a wheel tax, and then they gave, they gave a 5% reduction or something on property taxes. So, the questions were basically, you have resources there you haven't, you know, that you've got available right now, you haven't used, and instead, you're giving money back. The questioners, I think, had some concern about, is there any need for additional, you know, additional revenues to the county when the second, the second-largest county is not using what they already have? They just recently put in a, in fact, I don't know, the wheel tax may be referred, but that did not help our cause at all. I don't think, they would have been better off to stay home. Carol can't say that, but I can.
There was recognition from the legislators that have the counties taken advantage of their revenue-raising opportunities that they have, and some counties truly have not had the need for putting a wheel tax in place. Some prefer not to do that. We are very, we are very much in a minority, if not the only county in the state, that we do not use general funds for highway funds. Our wheel tax and other sources are able to take care of that.
Other comments or questions? If not, there's no executive session today? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Just a second.
Withdraw my second. I withdraw my second.
I apologize. Robert Wilson, County Commission Office. One other item for you under old business. I have briefed you a number of times before on the status of the Waters of the U.S. rule that's been making its way through a rulemaking process, and I've got an update for you today and also a letter in front of all of you, a letter to both of our U.S. senators, Senator John Thune and Senator Mike Rounds. And the reason for the letter was a communication we received from Commissioner Hyberger yesterday asking for a letter of support that you have in front of you to be signed, reviewed by the commission, and delivered today. And this is on fairly short notice, but there is a vote scheduled on the Senate of the U.S., floor of the U.S. Senate today, and that's what this pertains to. And this is a vote on the Federal Water Quality Protection Act and relates to the Waters of the U.S. rule is that would, I'm just reading, looking back at my notes here, would withdraw the U.S. rule is that would, I'm just reading, looking back at my notes here, would withdraw, withdraw the final rule until further analysis and more in-depth consultation with state and local officials can be completed. And this is a consistent position that NACO has taken, and one that they reached out to partner counties to express support for. And this is, the ongoing concern with the Waters of the U.S. rule has been a lack of, or perceived lack of engaging with state and local governments through this process. So, I can go into greater detail on that, but there was a, before we sent this letter to the, to our U.S. senators, wanted to bring it forward for your review and questions and maybe any feedback you have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think the letter is fine. I'd like to have all of our names on it, though, and I think if we emailed it to them, and I believe they have offices within walking distance or so, and hand-delivered one to their staff at these offices, I think it would be the best way to go.
Okay. Any other comments for Robert?
We do need to get this this morning, right?
Yep.
Commissioner, to your point, I've already spoken with representatives of both of their local field offices about, because of the timing here, the best way to get them, get this to them as quickly as possible, we're going to email it directly to individuals at the local field office, and then they will turn around and forward that directly to the policy folks on the, our point on this issue.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think we've talked about this before. The letter, from my perspective, is fine.
Do you need a resolution, or a motion?
Make a motion to send this letter.
Second. Motion to approve and send the letter. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Motion unanimously passes. I will say this morning that we have a video and visual system. If you have feedback from the audience, we would like to hear that, but we're very happy with what we've seen so far, and thank you for your support of that. You can contact the County Commission Office and give that feedback to us, and we certainly will take that into consideration and fine-tuning it if it's necessary. So, thank you so much.
And just a comment. These guys have been working all week hard to get this thing online today, so it was working. From the standpoint of the hearing assistance, awesome.
Okay, awesome. That's good to hear, literally. With that, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
You need to move to adjourn.
We didn't do that?
Nope. We had to circle back.
I renew my.
Point of order.
Renew my.
We did that once.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, then Robert stood up. Move to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.